Mute. No, our biro.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the May tenth, two thousand twenty-one council caucus meeting at six thirty P. M. Barbara, would you take a roll call, please?
Dudley.
Dudley here.
Dan who?
Here.
Nanavich?
Nanavich here.
Blake?
Here.
Tagarini?
Here.
Vaughn?
Um Vaughn is here.
You let the record show that there are six council members present and one due to the vacancy is missing. Okay, um. Going over the caucus right now, this, before we get into the ordinances, does anybody on council? Or one of the directors have anything they would like to bring up at this time that may appear on the floor? Okay, nothing. Okay, then we'll go right into the ordinances.
Hey, say that again, I didn't hear you, Chairman.
He says, does anybody have anything they want to bring up right now that may or may not appear on the floor? Um, before we get into the ordinances.
All right, how you doing? No, hey, Mayor, you there? Mayor, is he there?
Yes.
Okay, the thing I have, I sent you an email and it was concerned in what we have going on around that at the Dressler location, you could be the Family Life Center. And I saw that we had already scheduled a meeting for to appear before the Planning Commission on the twenty-first. How did we move that so fast? I mean, in all due respect, that's in my ward, we knew that was coming. Why didn't somebody reach out? It has always been protocol to reach out to the council person in that ward, have a discussion, July, the mayor previously when they wanted to do the escape house and before it was even brought to be the Family Life Center, I knew weeks and weeks and weeks ahead of time. But this to just jump up and say, hey, we're going straight to the Planning Commission, and then it's dealing, especially when it deal in real estate. I like to have an opportunity to find out a little something about the real estate companies involved. I know you all want to tell it your point of view. But I would also like to be able to look into the real estate companies as well as myself. And this is real, real quick, you know, without me being notified. I don't think that, in all respect, I don't think that was fair to me or my community at all.
Um, well, Mike, um, actually, I did bring something to your attention back on March eighth. We had the meeting with the, uh, with the World United People, I pulled you to the side and said something, but I will hardly say this is like ready to go. This, this particular property has been on the demolition list. There's over, I think, over four hundred thousand dollars owed on this property.
That's true.
And, and it's going to be, um, it's going to be torn down. I mean, they've already said that the county land bank has already said they're going to tear it down. What they're trying to do here at the Planning Commission is just to simply rezone that area from U eight to U one, single-family residential. Now, there hasn't been any builders or hasn't been any real estate people, um, contacted yet, and that's something that, you know, we definitely make sure we, we talk to you first. Um, but I think we just want to rezone that so that when it does get demolished, we can go ahead and, and explore having, you know, somebody come in and start building some houses. I, I think they told me I can get maybe eleven lots, anywhere between eleven to fourteen lots in where that building stands. So, um, I, I, that's the only thing I can answer for you there. I, you know, I know the information that you and I discussed on March eighth, that's all I knew about it till today, till, you know, May fourth, when it was being asked to be rezoned. But nothing's been done as far as tearing it down. It is on the demolition list. It is going to be torn down. They've already cleared it to be removed, but then after that, we've got to be able to explore how many lots can go in there, and that's something that will certainly get you involved then. Uh, and I don't mean any disrespect. It's just, that's what came to me on May fourth.
Oh. Not to be even taking, uh, personal, Mayor. It's just like when a project came up there, and I admit, the building got to come down. We all in agreement that that building has to come down and then serve this purpose. It's too old. You can't move it nowhere. I can't move it. You can't move it. Council can't move it, and that's not the problem. But when things always came up like this here, even that, it was like a, a, always been a courtesy, and this has been extended, like you, you're my third administration. And there's always been a courtesy way before the email, if it was going to Nanavich or, uh, Chairman of Nanavich or, uh, Councilman Vaughn or Councilman Blake or Don Hugh or somebody, they would end up knowing before we even knew as a body. And it was just something that we know, at the date that letter was sent out, we had to know them. I know it was a pretty busy month for us when we was having all this stuff going on with COVID, and you could have possibly pulled me to the side, and it probably was a short conversation, so, uh, that's no problem. I, I think we're on the same sheet of music now, Mayor.
Yeah, it, it was, and I didn't have any specifics back then, but I had just caught wind of it. At really the day before that, you and I were speaking with the World United.
Yeah, right.
Um, and I, I fully would have expected to get more information between then and now, but then I, I see where the administration is looking to rezone that so that when that building comes down, we're already one step ahead, and that, that'll be something to get into a conversation with. Cause I, I'd like to, I'd like to see somebody come in and build houses there. They're going to be really nice in the community, you know?
We agree one hundred percent, and I had talked that, um, uh, former mayor, uh, given, called over the same thing, that that building had to come down. To me is a danger, is a safety issue, and we know it's full of ambassadors, you know, so we had that discussion before. I just not knew that was coming out. We're on the same sheet of music, so I got no problem with that. I appreciate the response.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, if there's no other, uh, items that want to be brought up, um, I'd like to go over the, um, ordinances, starting with the ordinance forty-three, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any questions on this ordinance? Mr. Dudley, you have the floor.
No, I don't have, um, I'm, no, I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I wanted to make sure that is explained. I know why we have to do this because I understand how equipment from work with ODOT, how they make that equipment, and you got to get on it when equipment is available. Otherwise, you got to wait to the next round. But I would like that to be explained as possible when we hit the floor that people understand why this is an emergency. It's, it's not that hard for us to understand, but some people, you might want to say because of the fact that this equipment has already been made, and if you don't get this one, they don't have the cab, you could wait possibly six, seven, eight months before it come along again. The price isn't a factor, but I think we should explain as to why it has to be done in an emergency with the chairman, so we don't miss out on it. I do understand why, but I think that the public should understand why this has been done as an emergency as well. If it's, if, if, if it's, uh, no problem, I like for that to be done.
If you have no problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem, Mr. Dudley. Um, okay, ordinance forty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any questions on this ordinance? Mr. Dudley.
Oh, man, I'm out of tie that hand up, Mr. Chairman, and have a hold up there, high five you. My question on this one is, why we didn't bid this out at about fifty thousand? Why didn't we bid it out? And I understand that the business that we giving it to has done, uh, more than four thousand government contracts and everything like that. But why didn't we try to get the lowest price possible on this? Cause I thought that fifty thousand, I think we should have put it off for bid, cause I don't see anywhere we've been bid it out.
Um. Ms. Bureau, or Mayor, go ahead.
Well, I, I would just say, in speaking to the organization there, uh, and, and knowing some of the other organizations that are out there, these folks came highly recommended to us by a lot of other communities. Just so you know, I mean, they do four thousand, um, websites throughout the nation, but just around northeast Ohio, they do Berea, Shaker Heights, Mayfield Heights, Westlake, Fairview Park, Twinsburg, Solon. And I think they also do, um, uh, did I mention Fairview High, Fairview Park? Yeah, I think they, they do Fairview Park. I think they also do Parma as well. Um, the cost, the entire cost of this is actually a five-year program, so it's not, it's not like it's just fifty thousand, forty-eight thousand for one year. It's a five-year agreement, and it comes with a complete total redesign. But I'll tell you, for me, what was important, and, you know, you can get anybody to make your website, but what's important for me is to make sure we are ADA compliant, because as I was getting into this a little bit more, and, and you know, we've been talking about this for five years at least, we've been talking about the website. But as I got into this a little bit more, ADA compliance is very important. There is a, an athlete out there that has already sued a hundred and seventy-five different websites because uh, they aren't ADA compliant. It's a wonder we haven't been sued already because of it and, um, because of our existing website. So the fact of the matter is this comes out of our COVID funds. It's a time where we would never be able to do this if it didn't come out of COVID fund. And why wouldn't you go out and get the very best? And that's, that's just my feeling. Tim, I don't know. Do, do we have to send this out for bid? I thought if it was under fifty thousand, you don't have to bid something like this, or if it's underneath the communications thing where you don't have to, um, bid? I'm not sure.
Oh, no, we don't have to bid. If it's under fifty thousand, that in and of itself eliminates the bid. There's also the issue that, um, i- if it's a professional contract with a specialty, there's some argument there that you wouldn't have to bid it either, but it's definitely not, it doesn't have to be bid because it was under fifty thousand.
The, the other thing is there's not too many, um, companies out there that just specialize in governmental websites. There's certain things that you cannot put on a website if you're a government entity that other people can put on a website. Um, it's, it's crazy, the laws that are out there, and these guys specialize in that, and I know we're going to be compliant. To me, that was protecting the city from other lawsuits.
I have a question.
Oh, excuse me, um, this is Barb.
Yes, Barb.
Just for a matter of information, Council President, the last time we did this, we did peerless. Um, when we received that, uh, NOPEC money when we were in fiscal emergency. And this particular website, when we updated it the last time, it was under fifty thousand and there was no, um, no proposals or no, um, no going out for bids or anything like that. We, we, uh, put the information in front of council. It was Peerless Consulting at the time, and council passed it.
And I just want to make sure to that, that we saying, even though council passed it, like I said once before, which council had their own council too, and I still strongly suggest that city council should have a part-time council, and I'm, I still say one hundred percent they should. I just want to make sure it's not what we did in the past, is what we're doing now and moving toward the future, that the fifty thousand do not need to go out. If it came up to fifty thousand, we still wouldn't have to put it out to bid, and I just wanted to clarify that.
That is correct, Mr. Dudley. That's part of the O R C, Ohio Revised Code.
All right, okay, that's, that's good, Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question.
Mr. Tagarini?
Yeah, uh, the first line with the, uh, distant training, it's gonna, it says, uh, four-hour virtual. Is that going to be open up to all the citizens? And I do have a second question also. At the very bottom of that page, it does say forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight initial cost. It also shows an annual, uh, fee of seventy-four hundred dollars. That on top of the fifty thousand, or is, or is that what you're talking about?
Um. The, uh, first of all, to answer your first part of your question, the, uh, training is, uh, something that's going to be done with the, the, the department heads here, that is going to allow them to be able to make changes to their portion of the website. And that's something that isn't going to be open to the public, because it's really a, a training for the people that are going to be doing the work on the website within the city here. Um, the second part of your question is, that forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars is a five-year plan. So in year five, it would cost us seventy-four hundred thirty-two dollars per year, and it goes up as a, as a tech fee. You know, we're still paying, you still have to pay a fee every year to have the website and administer it. Um, but we won't have to pay that fee until year five, which would be the seventy-nine.
Forty-nine covers first.
First four years plus a four years, plus a redesign, which is, which means in four years from now, we can completely redesign our entire website. So, give you an example, is if something comes up where we can start, let's say, using, uh, um, like those scan codes or whatever, or paying bills online and things like that, we can redesign our website anytime between the time we, we start this and four years to be able to accommodate that, which I felt was very important, because you never know how things are changing today. You know, you got to be able to have that flexibility. Um, and that was just something that we were able to negotiate. You know, that usually comes at a hefty cost, and we were able to get that in with this number, so uh, that, that was good. Plus, that seventy-four hundred, um, in year five was well over eight, like eighty-nine hundred bucks. Um, and they, they gave us a discount because we signed up for a multiple-year thing. But regardless, I mean, once it's built, it's built, and it's something that we're compliant and, and we're ready to go. So, and the nice thing is, doesn't raise taxpayer money or taxes, you know, it's, it's money that's coming from COVID, which, like I said, we'll never see another time in our lives where that's going to be available to us. Might as well take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, Frank, thank you. Barb, thank you. Okay, um.
Donna has his hand up.
Mr. Donna, you, the floor is yours, sir.
I was just wondering, this is, uh, something far and above our I T guys' capability.
No, Chuck, that's a great question. Our I T guys are so busy. Um, just to give you an idea, ever since, I understand better now. I mean, that since February, I, I'm right here. I can ask them to do stuff. But in the past, when we've asked them, you know, it, it, they've been so busy that they can't really get to it. And then we've tried to have them train people within the administration, and unfortunately, the system that we're currently use, using is not as user-friendly to some people as, as to the I T guys, you know? And so, this takes it, this is very user-friendly, and the biggest thing is, it takes it away from the I T department so they can really work on what's important. They were working, you know, the, like the other day when I was trying to get stuff, um, changed on the website, Bruce is working on body cams for, uh, the, the officers, Justin's working on three or four computers that had crashed. Those are more of the priority than what they can put on the website. So, this takes it out of their hands, and it'll be much easier for them to be able to do what really is important for the city on, on their end. You know, and then we have everybody in every organism, every, every, not organization, but every department, like the rec department can put stuff on their own page. The law department can put stuff on their own page, as opposed to having those two bombarding groups about putting stuff on, on the website, so.
So, that's a, that's a really benefit to residents to, that we able to get on the website and find what, find what they want, correct?
Yeah, I, I will tell you, if, if you get a chance, go to Shaker Heights' website or Berea's website, that's what we're shooting for. And I mean, you'll see some things on there that are just will knock, knock your socks off. You can, you can, uh, actually, um, subscribe to their calendars. So like a council's going to have their own calendar. You can subscribe to it, and it will alert the resident as to when the council meetings are and remind them and things like that. It, it's really a beautiful piece of technology that's going to help. And it's what the residents have been asking for for a year.
Right, right, and that, that's what I'm trying to say is, this will clarify a lot of the residents' questions, and it'll really help them out.
Yeah, I was showing it the other day, and now I'm on, uh, I, I get notifications for Shaker Heights' zoning board and, uh, and Berea's planning commission, so my calendar's full.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, um, you said the directors will be able to put on the website for their departments. Who will be handling the department for council?
Um, it would, you, you guys would have to designate somebody on council to actually do that. I would think it would be the clerk, but that's up to you guys, and, and you'll be part of that training when they roll it out, whoever you designate.
Mr. Blake?
Might be beneficial to have the chairman of the Technology and Communication be trained on that.
That would be my next statement I was going to make, that, um, when we get this next appointment, um, we'll be filling all the slots for the open positions vacated by the ward four, uh, vacancy. And, uh, we'll insert a name there, and one of the, we may make, move a few people around. I, I, I'm planning on possibly moving a few people around, seeing as how we get into the position. And, uh, we'll go from there. But the communications and technology, uh, I didn't want to dump it all on the clerk. I think communication and technology for council would be the person that we should, uh, assign that task. Uh, does anybody else have anything to say on caucus? Mr. Dudley?
All right, this should be my last one, Mr. Chairman. We could get saying, ha, you know, to each other. No, I, I wanted to ask, uh, Councilman Tagarini, finally got it right. Did he have any projective date that he will be able to get that land committee together? Because like I say, I, I was over by the highway on four eighty the other day and just looking to see what for breezy, how they just building that mountain over there. It's become ridiculous now. I mean, I got complaints up and up and up, then I've been told they use a P A system over there, and the P A system is loud. But we have to have a meeting concerning these landfills. We got to meet soon as possible, so Mr. Tagarini probably could put a date together, because we have to move forward. We can't keep putting this off, and it's not him putting it off. He just came and he just got the position, Mr. Chairman, but it may be we have a date in mind that we all can kind of put together right now, move forward.
We have that date for you within the next week, and, uh, there. You were, you were to pass on some information to me, and I've been waiting on that so I could follow up on what information you have. And, uh, but I'll put that together within the next week.
Sounds good.
Last question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Dudley.
Yeah, we, we, uh, and Mayor, we really got to be able to kind of get that information quicker, because I even got old emails where I'm still waking on, waiting on, waiting on documentation from building concerning a question I asked about, um, terrace construction as well as bosman, and terrace construction, I still have not received my documents as of now, and we got to get them documented, so, uh, I didn't request them by email, and we got to get them moving a little quicker in our response time, coming from building in the hole. I don't have no problem with, but I need that information, and I think Mr. Tagarini is waiting for it as well, but I've been waiting for it for over a month now.
Well, I would definitely, uh, let Maureen Kuban know and, uh, Building Department know, and probably, uh, Tim Riley, if he could do that information.
Yeah, Camille, I already know, I, I, I got the email that I sent to, uh, to Mark there, and he said it was before his time, but, um, I understand things can be before people's time, but we can't kick this, keep on kicking a can down the road, you know, we can't do that. We got some issues with terrace construction over there as well, and I think, uh, I want to say one thing, I appreciate the council members coming over, taking a look. And if you want to take a look, Mayor, you meet up with me. I know your schedule busy, but if you come and look at it from M L K, you will see so much that you don't see when you drive one hundred and thirty-first, and like I say, that dust is absolutely terrible, and children is over there, and people would tell you, dust on your cars, you can write their names, you can't open your window because they didn't clear the vegetation. But hey, we got to move on to the next meeting. I appreciate it, Mayor. I appreciate it.
I will set up a time with you. We'll, we'll come out and take a look at it together.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I did see some of the stuff is being piled up along that exit ramp there on four eighty, so.
It's bad.
I've been inquiring.
Also, also, I went out there and looked at it, and I went on a rainy day, uh, fortunately, and a hundred and thirty-first is just so covered with mud and them coming in and out of there, uh, it, it looks horrible.
Yes.
It needs to be cleaned up, and just like, uh, Valley View, uh, they go ahead and, uh, they got a street cleaner now that kind of helps, and that, but we need, we need them to do the same thing and clean up a hundred and thirty-first, it does.
They do have, they do have a street cleaner, but it just creates the mud, and, and we get a chat to talk about that. It just create mud like you saw.
Everybody through? Okay, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, uh, before we go into the council.
Hold on, Barb, I see you, Barb. Bye, Tom.
Before we go into the council meeting, can we just go over the dates for these interviews for the wards for, uh, for position, please?
Okay, before I do that, we have one piece of business that I have to get done. Um, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council caucus minute, meeting minutes from April, from Monday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, as read. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Tagarini. Barb, would you take a vote, please?
Nanavich?
Nanavich votes yes.
Blake? Blake?
He froze.
Blake is froze.
I'll just go on. Tagarini?
Yes.
Vaughn? Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dan who?
Yes. Blake's back.
Mr. Blake?
Mr. Blake, how do you, a vote on accepting the coun- council caucus minutes as read?
Said yes.
He said yes, Barbara.
I thought he said yes. Yeah, thank you. And then Mr. Blake again. He's still frozen?
No, Mr. Blake said yes.
Right.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Done? Anybody else?
Go ahead, Tommy, you got the floor.
About this, uh, ward for council position we'll be filling, what are the dates of that and all, and who are the people that we will be interviewing?
The meeting will be on the eighteenth, which I believe is a Thursday. I don't have my calendar with me right now. It's only two people.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, and it'll only be two people on it. One will be Mrs. Saranowski, and the other will be, uh, Avery, um.
Scott.
Yes, Avery, and, uh, those are the only two. What we will do is, we will do the interviews. We will be going into executive session for those interviews, when, if possible, and we're satisfied with the, with the comments made and council, uh, agrees, we will probably make the decision on who fills the spot that night.
I received a phone call this afternoon from a Gregory Scuta who claims he sent in a letter. Did anybody receive that letter?
No.
Tom, I had asked everybody on the close of the fifth of May, if anybody received any letters. Nobody received any letters. I did not, and anybody council, if they did, I had to know, and nobody, nobody keyed me back.
Hey, I'll let them know. Thank you.
Barbara, you had a question?
You answered my question, sir. I wanted to, uh, get the minutes approved. I was just going to remind you.
And I did send you an email for the special meeting, the second person's name, so.
Yes, uh, we do that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. We got to get that done, and we got to get it back on the scrolls, so.
Oh, yeah.
It's taken off the scrolls because it wasn't okay, so. Okay, uh, any other business before council and caucus? Okay, there being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn caucus.
I'll make a motion to adjourn caucus.
Second?
Second it.
Barb, uh, take a role, starting with Mr. Tagarini.
Tagarini?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dan who?
Yes.
Nanavich?
Nanavich votes yes. Nanavich votes yes.
Blake?
Yes.
That's six to nothing to adjourn caucus?